And welcome to the March 14th, 2013 Longview City Council Meeting. Tonight, we're glad to have Garrett Craig, who is the Associate Pastor of the Grace Creek Church, to do our prayer and pledge. Would you please stand?
Let's pray. Father, we thank you so much for your many blessings. God, we invite you to be a part of this meeting. We pray, Father, for our city leaders, Lord, as decisions are being made and problems being discussed. We pray for creativity. God, we pray for wisdom. We pray for unity. And we pray for excellence in all that we do. So, God, we welcome you in this place. And it's in Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. Tell a quick, little story about our prayer and our pledge. Somewhere during my travels to the LSU football games, I got to meet the mayor of Baton Rouge one time and some of the council people. So, I got several calls beginning of the week that there's a radio talk show and there seems to be some issue down, I'm assuming it's in Baton Rouge, about, you know, praying at the city council meeting. And so whoever this person was called in says, "Well, let me tell you, Longview, Texas, they say their prayer first." So, people are watching us doing the right thing. So... Okay, we got speaker cards tonight, Vic Verma.
Mayor Dean, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here representing Organizing for Action, which is President Obama's grassroots advocacy organization. I have a few of our supporters here tonight. As implementation of the Affordable Care Act continues, an expansion of the Medicaid expansion constitutes an important element of the program. States have the option of whether to participate in this expansion. Many states are accepting the Medicaid expansion. However, to date, Texas has declined to participate. The benefits that Texas would experience by accepting the Medicaid expansion are enormous. Texas has the highest uninsured rate in the country. There are about 6 million Texans who are uninsured. By accepting the Medicaid expansion, at least 1.5 million Texans will obtain healthcare coverage. The fiscal benefits are also quite extensive. Cities and counties will see reductions in indigent care costs. Hospitals will see their uncompensated care costs reduced. And those already insured with private coverage will not see increases in their premiums that occur due to uncompensated care. Finally, in budgetary terms, the Medicaid expansion is a great benefit. In fact, per the Perryman Group, every dollar that Texas spends on the Medicaid expansion will yield $1.29 in state government revenue during the first 10 years of the expansion. In essence, the Medicaid expansion is a net budgetary positive for Texas. In summary, this just makes sense. Both the Texas Hospital Association and the Texas Medical Association have come out in support of the Medicaid expansion. Both Longview Regional Medical Center and Good Shepherd Medical Center have also come out in support of the expansion. We will be bringing federal dollars back to our state. In addition, the Legislative Budget Board has endorsed going ahead with the expansion. Dallas, Harris, Bear, and other counties, including, I believe, McClellan County, Waco, have endorsed the expansion and have passed resolutions to that effect. With this in mind, I urge the Longview City Council to support the Medicaid expansion. It is right for Texas and it is right for our community. And we are urging the city council to pass a resolution. To conclude, on April 2nd, at 6:30 PM at St. Andrew Presbyterian Church in Longview, Organizing for Action will be holding a Medicaid expansion forum. We will have healthcare leaders from Special Health Resources of Texas, Wellness Point, and Community Health Corps at this forum, speaking on their thoughts on the expansion. We are also working on getting representatives from both Longview hospitals at the event. The event is free and open to the public. We urge everyone to come and learn about the Medicaid expansion and how it will help the community. I have flyers for those who are interested and willing to pass them.
You want to leave with the city secretary, if you don't mind?
Sure. How many do you need?
Just, I mean, in case anybody in the audience might want it, how many do you have?
Forty, fifty?
Okay.
I keep them ready at all times.
No, I don't know, 10 or so. Just leave right there, if you don't mind? Okay? And we'll make those available to anybody here or anybody in the council, you know, when the meeting's concluded. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor Dean.
Thanks, Mr. Verma. Lefty vote.
Good evening, Mayor, council. I don't have anything. I don't want to get involved with this animal hospital thing. I think everybody's to blame all the way around. But back in 2010, I know most of you were on this council, and you guys passed this ordinance about animals, dogs, and cats. And I found out this last week, you're passing ordinances we can't even enforce. So, I was wondering, why you got an ordinance if you can't enforce it? It says that...
Lefty, what are you talking about? I mean, you got a problem with some ordinance or something?
Yeah. We have a number of cats that used to be out in our neighborhood.
Yeah?
I think the coyotes have gotten rid of most of them now. But I don't like cats. I mean, I had two wonderful dogs. I really don't like cats because they come out and they sit in my car. And so, I went down, found out that cats and dogs have to be on a leash. So, Mr. Allen, last council meeting even admitted he had cats running around his business. They're not on a leash. So, I got ahold of Buck Farah. He's over at Animal Control Officers. And we had a nice, long talk. And I asked him, I said, "How many tickets did you give to people that got cats?" And he said, "Mr. Volk, we can't enforce it." He said, "You're running over fences. You chase the cat home. You knock on the door, and the person says, 'It ain't my cat.' I don't want to get a ticket for $250. It ain't my cat."
They don't claim the cat, huh?
So, he said, "If you can't do nothing," he says, "you can't enforce it." Well, I said, "If we can't enforce it, what have we got it on the books for?" And he says, "You better go and talk to the council."
Okay, let me talk to you about that, Lefty. You've been coming up here for a long time. And I know you've engaged in running for the council and other stuff. So, I know if anybody knows anything about these ordinances, you do. Let's be truthful about what ordinances really are. Ordinances are a legal instrument that gives the city council, or excuse me, the city, the ability to protect public safety, public property, private property, okay? And almost, I'm not going to say every ordinance, but the majority of ordinances are complaint-driven, okay? And so, with a situation like you have, if you've got neighbor cats, feral cats or something, running in your neighborhood, my understanding would be the call to animal control, where they actually come out and put traps to trap the animals and take the animals. Typically, they go to the shelter. So, I understand that there's a lot of ordinances out there that, you know, police and our employees aren't riding around trying to capture and write tickets because in many cases, they're complaint-driven. So, I mean, I know you understand that. But, you know, when a neighbor calls, you know, about a situation like that, or about any other thing to do with weeds at your house or whatnot, that's when typically there's a response, you know, to that. So, not sure what, I don't know how we pick up every loose cat in the city of Longview because we don't have near enough people to do that.
Well, I guess in some ways, it's pretty good because I know a number of years ago, when I had a dog, cats bring fleas in the yard. We got overinfested with fleas. So, I told the neighbors, I said, "I'm going to fog my lawn tomorrow. Anything that gets on it, it's going to be dead." So, I'm just telling you, you keep your animals up. If they come on my lawn, can't help it. So, that morning, I got up and I flogged the lawn. Half an hour later, here come two of the neighbors' cats rolling around on the lawn. Half an hour, both of them were stone-dead. Lady called the police, wanted to arrest me for killing her cats. She finally admitted that they weren't her cats because they were going to give her a ticket for not being on a leash. So, she gave up on the idea.
Yeah.
But, I mean, it's getting to the point out there by us, like I said, the coyotes, there's a pack of five of them. Even Buck seen them. We hear them at night howling in the woods. I guess they come into town and found out there's a good lot of food in town.
Yeah.
And, I mean...
What we need to do, though, is talk to Kevin's here tonight, Kevin Cummins. And, you know, that's the thing. If there's a large amount of feral cats, because if they're not owned by somebody, they must be a feral cat. We just need to go, I mean, we typically set traps to catch those. So...
Yeah, because, I mean, like I told Buck, I said, "I ain't never seen anybody yet walk in a cat on a leash." They're supposed to be.
Yeah.
I ain't seen collars on cats. I've seen them on dogs. It says right in here that the veterinarian will give you a tag that you put on your collar on the dog or on the cat. I haven't seen any cats walking around with collars on.
Yep.
You know? So, I mean, like, you know, Sidney might have something special going on. He can let his cats run loose. I don't know.
In the scrapyard.
But that's just something I thought I wanted to bring up.
You know what? You're absolutely right. And I'm not going to sit up here and tell you a story. Look, there's a lot of ordinances that are not enforced typically by people patrolling and riding around. They're typically complaint-driven. I mean...
All right. Now, the only other thing I want to say is what Richard Manley said last week, or at the last council meeting. I appreciate what he said.
Thank you. Okay, that's all we have tonight. We have presentation items. Item A, Presentation Employee Service Award and Recognition of Longview Transit for 10 Years of Service to the City of Longview. And we have, from the transit tonight, we have, do we have a representative from transit? Okay, if you would come forward. Okay. All right, what are the names of the... Okay. I sure wish Miss Sidney Bill Willis was here tonight. I can remember her sitting right there with Cashes at when we started talking about, you know, public transportation in Longview. And she was, you know, pretty much the driving force behind that. But this just is a plaque that says that the mayor and the city council of Longview recognize the 10th anniversary of Longview Transit. So, I want to give you this. And I'm going to let you all introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Clinton Williams. I'm the supervisor.
Taquita Mumphrey, Director of Operations.
Okay. Thank you all for being here tonight. Presentations to each of them. What? We actually have something for y'all, for your own. Is it two or three? Okay. We also have an appreciation award for five years of service for Mr. Taquita Mumphrey. And we have five years for Mr. Corey Howell.
No, I'm sorry. This is for the next presentation.
Well, we just took care of that, it looks like. Mr. Willard, is that yours? Come on up here to the diocese. Item B. Good Lord. Do you know, you're telling me we got something else to do?
I'm thoroughly confused.
Okay, I know y'all. Let's sit down. Item B, Recognition of Longview Transit. Mr. Willard.
Okay.
Thank you for keeping us straight up here. Do you need this right here?
Mr. Yelling's? Why don't you come up here and straighten me out? Tell us exactly what all we have here.
We're just making a real big splash.
Yes, we are. We appreciate it.
One of our sponsors for Safe Ride Home is R&amp;K Distributors. We have Mr. Corey Howell here. And Taquita Mumphrey coordinates this for us every year for New Year's. And this is the program where we provide a ride for folks that need that in case they have a challenge driving on New Year's Eve. And so, we appreciate that service. And we do have two plaques, one for Mr. Howell. Thanks, boy. And we have one for Taquita Mumphrey. And we thank you for your support and continue. Thank you.
And then we have some pens, service award pens. 10 years. Wow, you've been here since we've started, basically, since day one. And we were down this last week, had their open house down there. And it was a great event. And for those that got to come, and we appreciate your 10 years of service.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you. Yeah, you started out as a bus driver.
I did start off as a bus driver. Director of Operations.
And this is your 10-year pen. Now, tell us where you started.
As a bus driver as well. And I became a supervisor, and I'm still there.
We have one more pen. Who is this pen for? Huh? Wasn't able to make it. We'll give that, I'll accept that on his behalf. We appreciate. Thank you all. Let's give him a hand. Thank you.
Okay, next item is the Consent Agenda Council. Is there anything on consent agenda that you'd like to consider separately? I know there was some, you know, some media attention to some of our Public Works projects, in particular Hollybrook. But I don't have any speaker cards regarding any of those issues. So, if you don't have any questions, may I have a motion on the consent agenda? Have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Zoning items. Item, the first item is a public hearing to hold to consider application Z 1302. Thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Dean, members of council, Mr. Willard. The applicant, Tom Holyfield, is requesting a rezone from office to neighborhood services for approximately 4.2 acres located at 1300 Hollybrook Drive. Comprehensive plan designates this area for light intensity business. Part of the reason for the rezone is to allow for a beauty shop there. And staff felt that rezoning, as opposed to getting an S U P for that use, was the best way to go. That would allow, you know, future uses to go there without rezoning. Planning and zoning commission staff do recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, this item does require a public hearing. The public hearing is now open. Do not have any speaker cards on this matter. Is anyone here that would like to speak to this issue? There not being so, public hearing is closed. May I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Shirley. Okay, action items. Item A, Consider Resolution to Publish and Post the Draft FY13 Annual Housing Plan and Consolidated Action Plan. Martell Armstrong, who is our new Housing Community Development Manager, welcome aboard.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and Mr. Willard, let me first start by saying, you know, it's an honor and a privilege to serve in any capacity in your city government, let alone a position that has the opportunity to give back to so many citizens. So, I'm thankful to be here. And your town has been very kind to me so far. So, I look forward to making this my home. I am here to request your approval to publish and post the draft of the amendment for fiscal year 2011 and fiscal year 2012 Consolidated Action Plan, as well as the publishing and posting of the changes to the fiscal year 2013 Annual Housing Plan, Community Development Block Grant, and Home Budgets.
Okay, questions of Mr. Armstrong. If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion. Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Item B is to Consider Resolution to Publish and Post the Draft of the amended Consolidated Action Plan and Home Budget for the City of Longview. Mr. Armstrong?
Uh...
Uh, let's see, for fiscal years 2011 and 2012?
Yes, sir. Those were covered in my statement. The fiscal year 2011 and fiscal year 2012 Consolidated Action Plan changes.
Right, okay. That's okay. So, do we have any questions or any questions for Mr. Armstrong on item B? If not, may I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Have a motion of second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Armstrong.
Thank you.
Okay, the final action item is to Consider Resolution Accepting the Recommendations of the Mayor's Animal Shelter Task Force. Counsel, the last meeting, we had some good discussion regarding the recommendations. And do you have, can you put those, the items that are on this resolution up, Sean? And what this resolution basically says is that council either accepts or adopts the resolution or does not. Accepting or adopting the resolution as prepared as you've received says that we're giving city staff directions, our direction on where we go from here, okay? This has been a long and tedious process. And my concern after the last meeting, not that Mr. Manley didn't have some good points, everybody had good points, my concern was that we weren't going to fall backwards and sort of start the process all over. So, what we did was, was to look at there was a lot more recommendations to the task force resolution. But personally, these were the key things. First, that we are committed to building a new facility to be constructed and owned by the City of Longview and our Greck County that provides 20,000 square feet with a capacity to house 186 animals, with plans and room for expansion to serve as an open-admission shelter for Greck County with the capacity to handle the intake needs of our community. Second, that a 501(c)(3) nonprofit-run day-to-day operations at a new facility. Item three, that the above recommended 501(c)(3) be required to maintain one board member appointed by the governing body of every governing entity participating in a new facility, in addition to the board members elected pursuant to the organization's bylaws, with every board member having one vote. And finally, and we could have put this first or fourth, but that staff is authorized to conduct a competitive process to seek conceptual plans for a new animal facility. Council, by adopting this and approving this resolution, we're giving staff direction to now go, to begin the due diligence process. And I will say that, you know, this is not gospel, but this says we're moving forward with this as recommended. As we go through the due diligence process, things can come up, okay? But our job now is to get the information that we need to continue to move the process forward to build a new animal shelter, okay? Is there any questions or comments that council would like to make before we vote? Oh, yeah. Please do. Mr. Manley?
My comments will be brief. I want to say once again, this is a role of government and a public safety issue. Everyone knows my concerns. I voiced them in the past. They're fiscal concerns and an expansion of government concern on my part. Having said that, I want to say that I like the way this is written, as opposed to some of the verbiage that was in the task force proposal. And so, therefore, I will support this recommendation and resolution as written, okay? Anybody else?
Yes, sir, Mr. Smith?
I'm speaking in favor of this animal shelter for the City of Longview because it takes them to strays and the abandoned animals off the street and give them a place until they can be adopted out. Because I think the people of Longview have already spoken. They said they want a shelter. Because the shelter we have now is 30 years old. We've outgrown that shelter. And we need a new shelter.
Okay.
That's all I got, Mr. Will.
Okay. Do I just have any questions? You know, one of the things also is, we've seen a vast improvement, you know, at the Humane Society, at the current shelter, in terms of the euthanization rate. And as we move forward and get this project going, there's a lot to be learned from that, okay? They've obviously begun working with the sheltering and the adoption process better. And you're seeing some results in terms of, you know, the number of euthanization being drastically reduced. So, that's a good sign. But that can be used as the new facility's built, okay? And we've said all along, the Humane Society has some, I mean, they have some good members, okay? And I don't agree with all of them. But, you know, we want them actively participating, you know, with the recommended 501(c)(3), you know, day-to-day operations organization, as we discuss having at least two members on that board. So, I think we're not, we're not at all not acknowledging, you know, the successes they've had. We want them to participate, to help us build a really first-class quality facility. Yes, sir?
The board, under the rules of the city, can only serve a two-year term. Is that correct?
I don't know.
The board members?
I don't know what the bylaws say, Mr. Sims, at this point. I mean, I don't have that in front of me.
Well, I hope that will be instituted here because with Northeast Texas, their board members were there indefinitely. And, you know, I cannot vote to put someone in there for a period of time. It needs to have the same law as...
Yeah, but, yeah, sure. But one thing, remember, as we continue to move down the highway with getting this project done, those are all things that we can discuss as some bylaws, I think, written. But go ahead, Ms. Manley.
Mr. Sims, I was speaking with Ms. Gill. It's so much easier to say the Mazarakis now, isn't it? That, as you know, they've already made some changes with some longstanding board members and added some new board members. And she did tell me that one of the next things that they're going to be working on is term limits and rotations of their members so that there will be a limited amount of time. I think two years or three years is what I heard. So, I was pleased to hear that also.
Okay. Yes, ma'am?
I'd just like to say that I'm content with the way things are moving forward. I think that it's time that we do move forward with those objectives set forth by the task force. And I think it's important to remind everyone that we are not committed wholeheartedly to any one specific type of facility or that type of deal. But I do think it's important we move forward to show our support and appreciation for those who've also served on the task force. And because that's the important part of the community as we move forward and try to make these changes and make different things happen. So, thank you also for serving and taking the time to put these ideas together to present to us. And I believe that as a council, we'll do our very best to ensure that we make the best decisions for our community moving forward.
Yeah. I just want to clarify one thing. We are committed to building a new animal shelter, okay? So, I just want to make sure. But we have to go through the due diligence, the due diligence process that has to take place for that to become a reality. So, but we are committed to doing that. Any other questions, comments?
I want, I'll say one thing.
Go ahead.
In any settings I've been in with people talking and whatever, I ask, I say, "What do you think about the animal shelter, you know, thing?" And they say, "We need it. We need to take care of the animals." Says, "I'm an animal lover. I've got animals. I've got rescued." I've got animals, I've, I've got rescued, I've rescued", I talked to a man today, he's got two rescued animals, and, uh, so any setting I've been in, I even said, would you, I've asked one time, "Would you accept a tax increase to build a shelter?" Yes, we need it. So, that's the attitude I run into since I've been...
That's the type of due diligence process we're, we're going to go through. Okay, I've got a motion...
I didn't say, I didn't say increase taxes. I did not say increase taxes.
It's on record.
Richard, he didn't say that. I did at the first meeting I ever attended as a city council, we got hung. Okay, so we, we've had a mo, Mr. Manley's made a motion, do I have a sec, have a second, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, motion passes. Thank you all from the, uh, task force. I see Dr. Glaze is here, and Ms. Ishihara, and lots of people here. Thank you all for being here tonight. Okay, items of community interest. Romeo. I mean, Mr. Sim, Mr. Sim, Mr. Sims.
You've got one coming.
I do, I do, I'm, I'm guilty. If it wouldn't, if it wouldn't be for Mr. Sim, I'll tell you what. But it's all good.
I've been on the council seven years, and we've been fighting this good fight for at least five of those seven, and I think the whole seven years, and finally, it looks like we got there. And, uh, I'm so proud of the ladies in the audience that didn't give up, didn't give up on us, uh, and I kept telling them, they would talk, uh, say, "Well, what are you going to do?", and I said, "Just don't give up. Keep the faith, baby." And, uh, they did, and here we are.
There you go. Mr. Garrett Smith?
I want to ask Ms. Laura Hill, when does Lear Park open? Lear Park, the Splash Park, is that opening pretty soon?
Oh.
It's open now?
Now, you, if you want to go get a splash right now, but, might be a little cool, but...
I could do that.
It's open right now.
I also want to say that the fire department is sponsoring a fire safety class for senior adults.
At the Splash, uh? No, seriously, no, okay, I'm, okay, a separate thing.
That's separate right there.
I'm thinking about that splash pattern.
I'm not exactly, I think you just call the fire department for, uh, the, when the classes start, I'm not sure when they do.
Are they going to run that on, uh, Channel 5?
I think they're running now.
Are we running that on Channel 5? On the fire, no, no, on the fireman, Garrett?
On the fireman, yes, they're running on Channel 5.
Okay, okay, so that'll be on Channel 5?
Channel 5.
Okay, good. Ms. Cashin?
Y'all don't know, the mayor's been on fire all day today. He spoke at something I was at earlier today, um, but, uh, quite entertaining. I would like to say, I hope everyone's had a very safe spring break, and to our city employees who have been in their offices this week, because it's very easy to want to take off. I don't have children, but I embrace children in our community. Thank you to those of, those of you who have taken the, have, have not taken off this entire week, although we believe in the value of family. Thank you. Just know that your service to our community does not go unnoticed. And last but not least, um, my church, St. Mark CME, we will celebrate our 146th. I'm looking at the mayor, he's been there time after time. Church anniversary, uh, we are the oldest historically black church in Longview. Uh, the service will begin at 3:00 PM, and everybody, as always, is invited to come.
That's, that's the number, 146 years.
146, wow.
I'm, I'm, uh, I was getting ready to say, is any of the, the original members still there, but, you know, when we did that...
We have a few.
When we did that 100 and...
About 120.
Twenty-something, you'd be surprised how many people that were first-generation members of that church.
I'm sixth.
Good Lord. Okay.
Uh, last Friday night, the firemen held their annual appreciation banquet. Uh, they handed out several awards to different groups and teams and things like that, it was very interesting. They had the, the state fire marshal named Chris Keneely, he was there, and he made a very inspiring speech. So, I want to congratulate all the firefighters and the paramedics on their awards. We have a great fire department, and they deserve what they, the awards they receive.
Thank you, Mr. Frost. Mr. Manley?
Yeah, two things I want to talk about that are happening in South Longview. One of them old, one of them new. The, I was at the Belcher Center last week for Fiddler on the Roof, and that was as good a Broadway caliber play as I've ever seen. They were fab, fabulous, and to stop and think that we have that venue at the Belcher Center in South Longview on the, on the campus of Luton University, and to have performances like that is just a very special thing. For those of you who've never been there, you're really missing out. It's a fabulous place. That's the old. The new is the I-20 Task Force. I was so pleased to see that we're getting started with that. I'm excited about, there's so many good things happening, and, uh, not unlike perhaps what Mr. Sims was saying, this is a, with regard to the animal shelter, this is something that's a long time coming, there's some people in this room who were fought, um, hard, long and hard for that. So, congratulations to all of you, we're very excited to see what the task force brings back to us. We're excited about what's happening in South Longview.
Good deal. Okay. Um, I've got four things. PAARD is hosting the Southwestern Athletic Conference Softball Roundup Tournament on March 22nd to the 24th at Lear Park. For information on the participating teams, call 903-237-1270. Women in Longview's Day is Thursday, March 28th, from 8:00 AM to 1:30 PM at the Maude Cobb Convention Center. Tickets are available at Texas Bank and Trust Downtown or Barron's. For more information, visit www dot Longview, excuse me, womeninlongview.org. The city of Longview offices will be closed Friday, March 29th, for Good Friday. The next District Two Town Hall Meeting will be April the 2nd. Get ready, Mr. Garrett. April 2nd, 2013, at Longview Christian Fellowship, located at 2101 West Marshall Avenue at 7:00 PM. Okay? Now, if I can turn this thing back on, I'll tell you what else we got. Okay, uh, that's all we have as far as community interest items. Uh, now we'll go to executive session. Personnel matters under Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, to consider, discuss, and deliberate performance evaluations for the municipal court judge and for the city secretary. We will not be returning an open session.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, I'd like to offer a motion that we excuse Councilman Allen, please.
Okay, have a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Okay. All right, so council will adjourn to executive session. Thank you all for coming.